All right, good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. This evening, we will have the King George Middle School Student Leadership Group lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into its red flag, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
May be seated. Thank you very much. So first up this evening, we'll have a moment of recognition for the VSCA Art Contest winners.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board, and to our King George community. We are certainly proud of all of our young artists in our schools. Each year, we have an opportunity to have pieces of art from our students advanced to the regional level for adjudication. This is for all of Region Three. And so, we are very pleased that this year, we have two pieces of artwork that have placed, one in first place and the other third place. So I'm happy to recognize, firstly, third place winner in the middle school category, Jocelyn Timpalski. Jocelyn is here from King George. If you'd be kind enough to hold your artwork there for the board to see, show off, and watch the whole ball. It's lovely. And while she does that, I want to mention that we do have, we do have the artwork on display here at the Reverend Coen Building. We worked out seven years ago, an arrangement of the county where we wanted to show off our young artist work. And so, we thank you for loaning us your artwork for use, so that our community in general can enjoy it as they come and visit the Reverend Coen Building. And then, we'll be happy to return to you, to host in your community. So would you be kind enough to stay here? I'm going to bring our other, we recommend both of you. Let me bring up Isabella Flande. Isabella, you're my kid. Okay, so it's my pleasure to recognize Isabella. Would you do the same, but proudly show the award and then our community your artwork? This artwork was selected as the very top piece of artwork at the elementary school level for our region. So congratulations. This artwork will go on to the state level. And so, that's very exciting. We will be looking for you to be a winner, because then it's like the state level, it goes to the annual conference of the fall to be shown on state line, and so, of school board members. So to both of our young artists in particular, and I want to mention all of the young artists who participated. We had several entries that went for adjudication. We're very proud of our students. We marvel at their artistic talent, and we especially appreciate both of you for representing us so well as a school division, and yourselves. And congratulations again, beautiful artwork, marvelous talent. So at this time, I'm going to come down and take a picture of our two young artists. I imagine there may be some proud parents. Also, I want to take pictures. We don't want you to come up. Take the pictures. We'll kind of center them behind the board members, so that we can have board members in the picture for you as well. Okay, so once again, joining me, congratulating our young artists.
Thank you all for sharing. Excellent work. Thank you for joining us. All right, we will now move on to the King George Middle School Student Leadership Group.
Yes. Okay, well, thanks for having us here. My name is Lisa Petriti. I'm a future leadership. Your leadership was fascinating, the topic, and we watched the video on those topics regarding the origination, scene, image, and community volume. We also had discussions where it took four more chapters or a relevant law to work with that one, and it's likely to get to bond offers and other that's been taught in the class. I think people are going to change their perspective. My favorite lesson of the season here is that we really impacted through a high thing in what it seems around the social class, culture, pressure, volume, and self-spectre. And I think that it is very well helped involve six years of each day how we are grown up.
Hi, I'm Chad Brown. Some of the main events last year were the PCEs and most of the scorers that have been. Artist discussion posts are great. I feel personally that they are just another sign that could do a lot of things at the night. They really have the meaning behind them, and they really do the purpose. I feel I get a lot out of them, and I love being able to respond and being able to just have my opinion being expressed and expected, and we're all able to agree in this, a great decision. Like, you can't, people, whatever, you don't have to. And it would, if we openly think you must have taken this work for the class, it wouldn't be possible without them. And my favorite discussion post in Harvard that we did had to be self-esteem and self-impression, because in middle school and in high school, that's a huge thing, how you get yourself in the mirror and how you carry that knowledge, and it was just a great topic, and really learning different things on how to use their art in middle school. Thank you all for having us.
Hi, my name is Lily. This is Kylie and Ayla. Thank you for having us here today. The Harvard videos are educational videos that the leadership team makes for our school. In class, we brainstorm ideas and topics that we would like to use in the videos. We each write in our own original scripts and record the videos ourselves and then send them to the teacher. Mrs. Fulton, the name twice was put in clips into one combined video that we really requested critique, and once the Harvard expedition showed all of our superior classes. I create the banner for all the school websites. And in total, we have created fourteen Harvard videos, that'll join content on Nike, Ked, Fidus, and probably R. D. Along with writing and recording our own scripts, we try to make sure that each Harvard has its own unique element. For example, in our kindness covers, we made little cards that encourage you to know time and for student staff to encourage them to keep going through these tough classes. Although this virtual environment has made it difficult to come together and to read using new videos, we have over one thousand and five hundred and fifty together. Now that some students can go back into the building, they've been able to work on these parts and impressions together while us putting the virtual students in the process. The Harvard videos are just about, they help, they bring up multiple students about different companies that need their help, and it's great that they can.
Hi, I'm Jared. I'm the first all-time founder of the video day. I'm a resident of the Harvard thirty, thirty, so we, the, the, the.
It's already, just got it, so.
So it's, it was new to the new app. We've done some, which included change by day guys, um, and everyone. My favorite ones must have been, were able to have work rates for T and do everything for the school. None of this was ever been possible, but the help from this logic to this whole, and basically fifteen of you, you're to them. So thank you.
As Jared has explained, spirit week is the week where all the teachers, students, and staff participate in a hobby that we should, we, that we transform and show us up, so that we can do, and, uh, my favorite spirit week day was, uh, change your friends and our maybe friends. I made plenty of friends in the school that I was doing last year, and, uh, this, I took the opportunity to make friends on this spirit.
Hi, I'm Emma. And something we did last year was, we made it sort of into a club, so we made a bucket and give out a few shout-outs. We had to change a little bit the spirit due to virtual learning. So we made Google form, we created virtue receive shout-outs for making like plug-in to class for a full week, turning it all aside, participating in class, and paying for discovery. This is just one of the many things in new leadership, and I really got to see.
Hi, my name is Nancy. Today, I'm going to talk to you about something we do in our leadership class with our birthdays. Last year, this doctor was to take a, go to Harvard School and make out papers. We agreed all, announced it every morning on local announcements, and here all the nights and evenings, of all the things that we do, it was due to the virtual, to the, to the change that it's happened. This doctor during his coaching, I think it was a little doc, and it would put all of her physical hand, and this, we do talk, and completely in our own videos. I also do all these things and being able to let everyone know what happened with her things.
Hello, my name is Adrian Woodis, and, uh, school is the place to learn, interact, and this year has been crazy, because you have changed, like Max, since he's in the variables. Many students' grades have suffered this year, virtual instruction, but the students who chose to be hybrid are happy to be back in the building. All those social students have occasioned us, totally, just to say, virtual learning is here, and they're still doing well. Now, we have a short video to showcase some of our.
I'm twenty-one, three years. School and dinner is our place, due to COVID, and still greatly.
From the virtual office. The shout-outs go to Jordan B., Nella Christians, and Mandy Reggie, from Mrs. Eva for one, above the beyond, creating videos to encourage to our elementary students.
October fifth is the World Day of Holy Prejudice.
That's what goes to all our people.
We hope you guys participate in, let me, spirit week.
Today, we've discussed the importance of time management and how to be better at it. Navigating the correct words to go by, you have to communicate down there.
What's the point of conflict?
In this scenario, we both need to show patience. Yeah, that's what I'm hoping to be teaching, kind of, even when you swing and run, you have all the difference.
You got to go in and shake your heart, and shake your heart.
I don't want to talk this to you. I don't want to talk this to your friend, because this is your office. We've talked about it.
This Harvard will be talking about people in different cultures and celebrating them for who they are.
It's the Year of Change Week of Change. Show your spirit from April twelfth to sixteen.
What is kindness?
God, goodness, being kind. It contributes your energy level, helps you improve self-esteem, and brings you the answer stuff, and also gives you a certain control.
National Kick Butt Day is held on April first. On this day, many youth organizations, parents, and other adults march out to encourage the young teens of our community to reject tobacco products and reject G cigarettes. So on this day, let's kick out no product.
What are some tips to improve your body image? There are many ways to improve your body image, like changing your habits and eating healthier.
Personality in your heart is much more important than your looks. Always remember that looks will fade.
We're important to the school. Let's finish.
This is what, when we advance on. Move into the race for us.
SOL stands for Standards of Learning.
So let's rock our SOLs.
Two things that are super important to help you on your SOLs is getting good sleep and eating a healthy breakfast. Just remember to do your best and get on studying.
We made it through this challenging school year already. Good luck on all your tests. You got this.
What was that, club for picture? Certainly. Thank you for sharing. The video was great. Do you want to stand up? Should we stand up? We're not like. All right, thank you. All right, thank you all, to all of our future leaders.
You guys have any questions for us? We forgot to ask.
My only question is that, when will we have another student representative on the board?
Uh, you have to, I'm going to put that question to Ms. Daultridge.
Anyway, when can we have students represent? That's all, so good, and regulations. But we want them sooner than later. I know, you did. It's such a joy.
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, guys.
I've had the opportunity to, to witness firsthand last year, your operation. It was very impressive. Thank you, Ms. Daultridge. Keeping it. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Fulton.
And all of our Harvard videos are on our website.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we have our PTA Reflections winners. Chairwoman Gonzalez, fellow board members, Dr. Benson. The PTA Reflections Program is an annual arts recognition and achievement program for students. I am pleased tonight to share with you our winners at the county level for 2020, 2021, all of whom are tuning in virtually tonight. At the primary elementary level in photography, first place, Levi Kreiser. Special artist, first place, Dylan Lamb. Intermediate, intermediate elementary level in photography, first place, Molly Habgood from Potomac. Second place, Wyatt Lamb from King George Elementary. In music composition, first place, Laura Tully from King George Elementary. In visual arts, in the intermediate elementary level, first place, Emily Drinks, King George Elementary. Second place, Molly Habgood from Potomac. At the middle school level in photography, first place, we had Caleb Inzanna from King George Middle School. In music composition, first place, Emma Mendenhall from Potomac. In visual arts, first place, Irisa Brummett from King George Elementary School, and second place, Brian Hollis from King George Middle. In literature, first place, we had Ayla Zook from King George Middle, and in second place, Emma Mendenhall from Potomac Elementary. In film production, first place, Brian Hollis from King George Middle. At the high school level in photography, we had first place, Aiden Inzanna, and in literature, first place, Taylor Hollis from King George High School. Let's give these guys a round of applause. I have more hot news since we sent these winners their county council ribbons, and that is that King George swept the state competition. The following, the following students placed also at the state level. Levi Kreiser, Laura Tully, Emily Drinks, Caleb Inzanna, Emma Mendenhall, Irisa Brummett, Ayla Zook, Brian Hollis, Aiden Inzanna, and Taylor Hollis. Congratulations to our state reflections winners as well. Thank you. Awesome. All right, thank you, Ms. Rinko, and congratulations to all of our winners. Congratulations to all of our winners who are tuned in virtually tonight. Thank you. Chairman Gonzalez, fellow board members, Dr. Benson, tonight, I also come wearing my hat of president of the King George County Council of PTAs. It is my privilege and I hope your pleasure to share with you words from parents and students supporting our view that all King George County school educators truly deserve the description of outstanding educator this extraordinary year. I have so many to share that this is actually the second installment of three, and I just want to thank you all so much for your attention and for you allowing me to share these wonderful words from parents and children. We, I had people reach out to me after the last meeting to say that this was part of one of their favorite parts of the last school board meeting. One of our winners, Mr. Cheatham, messaged me after and let me know that he had actually recorded his, his, the words that were, were said and sent them back home. So thank you for allowing us to read this tonight. Outstanding educators. Mrs. Richard has managed to continue to excel in her field by making this year as normal as possible for her students. She began a new club in a virtual format, the Rubik's Cube Club, of which my daughter is a member. Now, thanks to Ms. Richard, she is the Rubik's Cube expert in our household. Mrs. Richard, you stand out. Mrs. Parker went above and beyond to keep her students engaged in learning this year. Events, lots of singing, dancing, creative activities, she has done it all to make learning fun. She always keeps parents well informed and works tirelessly to make each child feel special. My son adores her, and so do I. Mr. Pfeifer has been very responsive and helpful this year. We are very appreciative of his work. He holds office hours most afternoons for students who need additional help, and he has learned a whole new system of teaching while continuing to make classes engaging and welcoming. We are so grateful for him. Mrs. Burke has a passion for teaching tag math, and it shows. She is so creative in coming up with assignments and events that tie into math topics and excite her students. We appreciate it. During the early part of this virtual year, my daughter was having some issues keeping up with her work, and Mrs. Burke reached out in emails and phone calls with compassion and encouragement. My daughter, who is moving up to the middle school, will miss Mrs. Burke. Mr. Mack, he makes hundreds of videos for the students to watch. In addition to the synchronous instruction he provides, he goes above and beyond for his students in every way. He truly cares about them and their life and helps them to be successful. Ask any student who has had him, and they will tell you, he is awesome. Mrs. Morris is an outstanding educator for many reasons. She has been my math six X teacher for this year, virtually and in person. She tries to make learning fun and enjoyable by making it colorful or a game. She is also really funny. Morris, Ms. Morris deserves to be recognized for everything she has done to help me learn, even through COVID-19 and the computer. Mrs. Connolly is an outstanding educator to me. She always answers all of my questions. She gives me a lot of work, and extra work if I ask. When I was virtual, Ms. Connolly drove to my house to deliver materials. I am really glad Ms. Connolly is my teacher. Mr. Gerbert helped me a lot with school. Super cool teacher, my favorite teacher. Ms. Dibble hasn't skipped a beat, inspiring, challenging, and supporting her students. She expects nothing less than what they can give her. When they don't know they can, she helps them see for themselves. I am proud that my children have had her. Ms. Collier, my student thrived in her virtual classroom. She captivated my student, and he was excited to go to class every day. My sudden son felt a part of his class and grew in so many different ways with this virtual environment. He is a hybrid student, and he misses his virtual student, I mean, his virtual teacher still. Mrs. Cornell, lastly, has adopted my son into her classroom seamlessly. He has loved his hybrid time. While this hybrid classroom has many challenges, Mrs. Cornell has made it as normal as she can, and he really has thrived with her. Thank you. And this concludes my second edition of King George County Council's PTA's Outstanding Educator Spotlights to all of our King George County school educators. We want to thank you for your dedication, your perseverance, and the impact that you have made this school year from King George County Council PTAs. Thank you very much for letting me share. Thank you, Ms. Rinko. All right, now, we will move on to public and employee comment. Ms. Rinko, do we have any public comment this evening with us? Okay. All right, so for public comment, please state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes to make your comment. And so, first, we have Mr. James Hall.
Good evening. My name is James Hall. I live at 1191 Woodstock Road, King George, Virginia. Several recent news reports support Delegate Rans, Margaret Ranson's recent letter that announced that Virginia schools would soon eliminate all accelerated math courses prior to eleventh grade. That means that algebra and geometry courses will not be available until late in students' education. This radical change is not being done because it will increase our students' math comprehension, but is being done as part of an equity-focused plan. First off, as an engineer that has taken First off, as an engineer that has taken lots of math courses, the school system will set their students up for failure in college if this change is implemented. Math is hard. It requires students to grasp difficult concepts earlier in their education, and 11th grade is far beyond that threshold. A close parallel is learning how to play a musical instrument. Learning how to play violin, piano, or trumpet cannot be delayed until 11th grade for the sake of equity, and still expect the senior classes orchestra to play beautiful music. On a separate but related issue, additional news reports have announced that Virginia is exploring plans to end advanced diplomas. Specifically, the Virginia Education Department's Director of Policy went on record to state, quote, "graduation requirements can operate as a lever for equity," unquote. This single quote calls into question whether the official policy for Virginia schools is to focus on education or to conduct social engineering. Secondly, while equal opportunity is what the 1960s civil rights movement was all about, the present-day concept of equity has no place in the classroom. Equity is all about equal outcome, not opportunity, with mediocrity as a desired objective. That concept is socialism on the intellectual playing field. Life at large is not about collective equity, but is about competition. In the strategic sense, there is no larger game of life than warfare with winners and losers, period. To illustrate, I invite you to read the Department of Defense's most recent National Defense Strategy. One quote from it is this, quote, "The reemergence of long-term strategic competition, the rapid dispersion of technologies, and new concepts for warfare and competition that span the entire spectrum of conflict require a joint force structured to match this reality." The students of today will make up America's joint force of tomorrow. That is the reality. Towards that end, what students today will create the technology for tomorrow? Students that excelled in science, technology, engineering, and math will. What students today will develop the new concepts for competition in the diplomatic, informational, military, and economic fields of tomorrow? Students that are encouraged to rise above mediocrity and achieve the highest academic accolades will. By extension, what school board would be willing to risk losing the future's national security strategic competition in pursuit of equity? Only those that are eager for America to play second fiddle to China, Russia, and most of the more advanced states in this world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Vance, do we have any public comment online? Looks like we have Mr. Brandon Hager.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, yeah, good evening. My name is Brandon Hager. Again, my address falls within your represented district. I got a couple of questions this evening for Dr. Benson. Sir, I have an unanswered email that I sent to you and Ms. Gonzalez yesterday. I would respectfully ask you to explain why my seven and 12-year-old are forced to wear a mask on a playground and during pee when it's 87 degrees outside, as it was yesterday? Questions to you, Mr. Benson.
Mr. Hager, you will not be answering during public comment. You may continue with your comment.
Say it again.
So, the board will not be entertaining, providing answers to your questions during public comment, but you may continue with your comment.
Okay, so how am I supposed to get an answer? I've sent you all emails. I'm asking you the question now, ma'am.
Dr. Benson will reply to your email. Would you like to continue with your comment?
Yes, I, I just want to answer. It doesn't make sense. With the CDC's recent guidance, recommendations of vaccinated personnel yesterday not needing a mask outside any longer, he's trying to understand with the vaccine not being administered to children because the science shows they're not affected by this disease, shouldn't that same concept apply to the children under 16 as well and in the school? And I'll, I'll send up some follow-up questions as well, but I want to be very clear, and please put this down for the record going forward. Neither of my daughters will be forced to wear a mask outside during physical activities while safely distancing. And if that's going to be an issue, I do look forward to starting the administrative process accordingly. That's all, and I look forward to hearing your response. Thank you.
Vance, do you have any additional comments? Is that it? Okay, all right, at this time, do we have any changes to this evening's agenda?
Madam Chair, recommend that we remove from the discussion agenda policy JHCF, as in Frank, Student Wellness. That's still being worked on by staff, so we hope to bring that back to you next time.
Okay.
J, J-H-C-F, as in Frank.
Okay. Do we have a motion to remove that policy from the discussion item this evening?
Your mic, go. Sorry. I move that we remove policy JHCF from the discussion items for this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, so moving on, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, I, I would like to strike the March 29th. I wasn't given the opportunity to do that under the changes of the agenda. I, I had some comments in regards to that, so I would like to strike that, the consent agenda.
The 20, the minutes on the 29th?
March 29th, that's correct.
Okay, do we have a motion to remove the March 29th from the agenda this evening?
I make a motion that we remove the minutes from March 29th, 2021, regular meeting minutes from the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of February 22nd, 2021, and March 22nd, 2021.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, next up, we will move on to our action items. So first, we have the authorization of signature and absence of the superintendent. Dr. Benson?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I believe this came to you last time, but each year the board is asked to authorize persons to sign in my absence. And so you have that before you in terms of Ms. Beth Kuzierski and Ms. Christine Hill. Appreciate your consideration.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our policy manual updates this evening. For approval, we have EBCB, Safety Drills, GCN, Evaluation of Professional Staff, GCPD, Professional Staff Discipline, IA, Instructional Goals and Objectives, IGAH, Family Life Education, JEG, Exclusions and Exemptions from School Attendants. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the policy manual updates as defined.
Do we have a second? Any discussion, Mr. Collins?
GCPD, I believe it was.
The last reading of the GCPD, Best Staff Discipline, where it was struck. Like to keep that in there, that was struck.
Which one? Is it GCPD?
PD.
Madam Chair, if it helps, I can, I know that last meeting, that question was brought up. I did email and answer. The board directed me to seek guidance from Ms. Elizabeth Ewing from VSPA S T Y. She did indicate to me that the, the edit was made simply to keep the language aligned with state statute, that there was an amendment to the state statute, I believe, in the 2020 General Assembly. And so the edit was simply made to keep them aligned. It really is not impactful one way or the other. It can be kept, it can be discarded. The issues that it pertains to in terms of certification and otherwise can be pursued other ways. So it really is superfluous in this sense, so it's up to the board whether to keep it or not. Hope that helps.
Can you remind us which part of the policy that was that was struck?
Yes, there was, I think in the first paragraph, there was language. Let's see if I can get to that.
Oh, I remember. GCPD, you remember?
I don't remember what the exact saying was, but I'm deluded.
I think I would need to go back to the last packet, Madam Chair. But I'm certain it was in that, that was the...
Okay, would we like to remove that from the, from the list of action items this evening and bring it back?
Can you have the...
So we can see it, what?
Motion person make an amendment?
Certainly.
I'd like to amend my motion to eliminate the policy GCPD.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is amended. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Yes, I do. I understand.
Thank you. I'm used to high school, but I'll, I'll catch up. I am concerned about doing a change, even as inconsequential as this would be, that results in our not being aligned with the statutes. And I think that's the protocol that VSPA advances and has consistently. So regardless of, of our interpretation as to whether it is inconsequential, I think that perhaps we should remain aligned with the statute of Virginia.
So local, local school boards can continue to have local policies or add or subtract to the policies that are, the VSPA is a advisory board, not a regulatory board. So therefore, I'd like to keep that in that particular policy.
Any further discussion? I tend to agree with Ms. Hawk, but nevertheless, we can revisit it next week or at our next meeting. Do we have, so we'll call the, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Ms. Hawk, vote.
Yell, did you? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right, I didn't. Sorry. That was all there. All opposed?
Nay.
To approving the ones that we had? That was the main motion to approve all but GCPD.
I'm sorry, I, I thought we were approving inclusive of that, but you removed it correctly.
I removed it, correct.
Yes, so my, my, my misunderstanding. I'll vote yea.
No, we did not vote to remove it like we had done in the past.
Wait, what? We didn't what? We moved, voted to remove it from the action item this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
No, we just, we just voted to approve all of these action items with excluding that one.
Correct.
All right, I'm saying previously, we had to vote to take it off and then vote to approve it.
Well, nevertheless, chair voted aye, so the motion is carried. All right. Okay, moving on to our discussion items. First up, we have the 2021-2022 Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Fisher and her group have worked, again, to provide you a, a draft copy of what we anticipate will be put together as our student and family handbook, which includes sections of our code of behavior. She's provided for you just a summary of changes, which really, we do not have many this year, particularly those that would be substantive. Those that we would have or that are contained here follow new legislation, as they always do. Pending legislation, we, we keep an eye on that, and if we need to prior to print date, then we certainly amend to make sure that we're aligned with any passed legislation. And then we do have a statement that's been added as far as just COVID, to pertain to COVID and adjustments we've made. So, other than that, and then basic, just proofreading, copy, editing, that type of thing, the, the draft book is there for your review for between now and the next meeting, if you have any questions. And again, I thank Ms. Fisher and her group for not only monitoring legislative updates, but also summarizing for you in this summary document what to look for within the document over the next couple of weeks. And I'll be happy to have her here next meeting if you have questions. But we do ask that you give this consideration for approval at your next meeting so that we can have it in time to go to print in preparation for the fall. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, Dr. Benson. Is there any discussion, Dr. Benson, on the Student Code of Conduct?
Just one minor thing.
Go ahead.
I've had the opportunity to read it. There's no problems in it, except there's the constant misspelling of my name. T-E-R-E-N-C-E is the way I spell my name. So there's some documents in there that's incorrect.
We'll correct that, of course. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hawk, anything? Ms. Panter?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Moving on to the Kid, the King George County School Transportation Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. We have prepared for your consideration a proposed purchase for air quality systems in our school bus, bus fleet, 60 buses. You have a copy of the proposed purchase order as part of the packet. During the course of our research, we believe it best that we go with the model specified. The model specified attaches to the roof of the vehicles rather than the floor of the vehicles. You have the initial installation and procurement cost there. I would just mention that there is a, a replacement filter cost, that's an ongoing cost, I think every, every three years at approximately $500. I don't, I believe that's what the...
$358?
Yeah, so we would just need to budget that from year, every third year for replacement of those filters. But I do appreciate, Ms. Panter brought this to our attention initially, and we've done the homework to find the best model we recommend to you. We believe this is the best model. It obviously then, it not only captures, but it uses a light system or an ultraviolet light system to, to neutralize the virus, capture it in the filter itself. And much like our ionization systems in the schools that have been installed, it will have benefit to our school division well beyond the, the pandemic. So again, we appreciate the guidance. We believe it's a good purchase to make, and we ask for your consideration. I bring it to you because it, of course, the cost exceeds the threshold by policy that I'm authorized. It would have to be a board-approved purchase. I have to answer any questions you may have or field questions for additional research you have, and not just tonight, but over the course of the next couple of weeks before you vote on it.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
My question is, is there a timeliness to this that you need a vote tonight, or?
No, not necessarily. We would, obviously, I think we'd look at the summertime when we're not utilizing the fleet that we would rotate buses in to be, to have the, the units installed in time for the fall.
Okay. Dr. Benson, did we get any other prices from any other vendors?
The, not on that system. There's a, there's a sole installer, or the, the equipment manufacturer selected a sole vendor in Virginia to install their, to, to sell and install their devices. We did go to a bid process for the other, for two other quotes, but those companies quoted us products that are installed on the floor. And we, we just don't believe that's a good choice for a school bus, given the, the wear and tear. Typically, those units, from my understanding, are used for like emergency vehicles, other types of vehicles where air quality is important, but not necessarily a school bus where you have kids every day, you know, walking on and off.
And that would make, that would meet the procurement requirements that we have.
It does.
The question?
Mr. Collins?
The 203,652 is coming from where?
That slate, I believe it's cares.
Which one?
Here's, cares two.
How much is it? How much is left in that balance?
That's listed on this, the sheet that we got? Mr. Collins, did you?
Where's that at?
It's the care twos, proposed expenses.
It's from a previous meeting, though.
Previous meeting, do you want me to, here, I'll pass it down to you. Pass it down so you can see it, it's on the second page, I believe. Or at the bottom of the first, I don't remember.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Benson? Good. Dr. Benson, I have a question, the, what is the difference between the pro air, the HEVUS, have a, the UVC light system, I guess, and the other one? There are two, like, it's like five and 60 of them? Two different filters? Are they all the same systems?
Are you talking about the three versus the six?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that three was for a smaller vehicle, you know, for less than 30, I believe. And then the, the type that would be more appropriate for our use, because we have more, typically more than 30 passengers, would be the six, the dash six model.
Okay, makes sense. All right, any further discussion?
And this will be for just the buses as opposed to the cars which transport students?
Yes. I don't.
Seems prudent that they do the buses, not the cars.
Yeah, I can, I'll talk with this.
Students.
I'll talk with our transportation folks about that to see. You know, A, if the cars are such, if the ridership in the car is such that it would warrant some type of special equipment. I'll check on that, it's a good point, thank you, Ms. Hawk.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Benson.
You're welcome.
So next we'll move on to our policy manual updates. So first we have policy GBEB Staff Weapons in School. Were there any questions or comments on that policy? Okay, on policy GCDA, Effective Criminal Conviction or Founded Complaint of Child Abuse or Neglect. So Dr. Benson, I have a question. It mentions on page, it's 95 in the packet, or, let's see, let me find it here. It basically states that basically reciprocity between school boards, I believe. And I was wondering what other school boards do we have reciprocity with?
I'm sorry, Ms. Gonzalez, help me.
Yeah, so it's page 95 in the packet, I'm looking for it myself.
What's the nomenclature for the, the one you're inquiring about? Is it?
Yeah, sorry, that's, oh, it's, it's policy GCDA.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to find where it had it in here.
Okay.
I wrote the page down, failed to write which section.
You said fourth page, founded complaint section?
Sorry, what was that?
Did you, which, which sub-paragraph are you?
Oh, yeah, that's, now that I'm, I've written it down and I can't find it.
Oh, okay.
It was basically stating. Search in here, can I? I'm sorry, I can find it later and follow up with the question.
Okay.
Yep.
Was this referencing the, the coordination between the governor's schools? And the?
No, I don't think so. I can't remember if it was on background checks or something. It basically said that you can use, if you have like a reciprocal agreement with other school boards, you can get information from them. And I was wondering which schools we had those arrangements with. But I can't find this section now that I'm looking for at this very moment. I may be wrong, anyway, I won't belabor the point, I'll find it and follow up with a question later on. All right, anyone else have any questions on that one? All right, next is policy JEC School Admission. Any questions? All right, policy JEC School, JECR School Admission. Okay, policy JED Student Absences, Excuses and Dismissals. And I actually, Dr. Benson, I was wondering, this might apply to the other two as well. Can you remind me again, the difference between the policies with the R, even though they have, the policies have the same name, but the content of the policy is different?
Yes, so a policy is actually without, is absent any suffix letter, no dash or R. So that would be the, the parent policy. Whenever you see a dash and then an R, that refers to a regulation that goes into more specificity as to how we implement the policy. Not every policy has a regulation, but those that, that need guidance in terms of operationalizing them typically will have a regulation attached. In some cases, we may even have a dash F, which would be like in a form that perhaps would be part of, again, the, the operationalizing of the, of the policy. So that, that's what those dash and then RF typically are, that's what they stand for.
Okay, thank you, because I recalled that the JEDR was the, I guess, the regulation then in which we adopted the addition of bring your child to workday being an approved absence. Okay.
Question.
Mr. Collins?
So what is a barrier crime?
Which one is it? Which page?
Barrier?
Yeah, it's referred to.
I'm just trying to get on your same.
GCDA, I care.
I just did a quick check, it says barrier crimes means crimes is defined in particular state code that would prohibit either the employment or the continuation of employment if a person is found through a Virginia State Police Criminal History Record Check to have been convicted of such a crime. So I would assume a list of crimes that would prevent you from being employed, a barrier to your employment, be my assumption.
So are there crimes that would not prevent you from being employed, a felony? I know in the past.
I assume the crimes that are listed there, I don't have that in front of me, are felony crimes. Am I not tracking with the question?
So we, we've talked about if an employee has a felony conviction, whether or not they can be employed. And Human Resources said no felonies. Bar everyone from being, anyone from being employed. So if you look at all the felonies, there's some a barrier crime, I guess, is something to do with involving sexual molestation or physical or sexual abuse. But I don't know what a barrier crime, what, what, they used to have a list of the crimes instead of calling this barrier crime.
So I think you can find the list in the state code.
So what, so the question is, can an employee have a felony?
So I, I'm left to assume that, again, this has been a change in the, the code of Virginia, or perhaps it's, the code has been further clarified through this listing of barrier crimes, the way I read this. And that those crimes, I think you're correct, Mr. Collins, and that those crimes that are listed then as barrier crimes to include, I don't know that they're exclusive or they're, they're only inclusive of the types of crimes that are described there. But it would seem the way it's, it reads that in addition to any type of sexual molestation, physical or sexual abuse, or rape of a child, the barrier crimes would be in addition to that in order to disqualify someone for consideration for employment. I don't know if, I mean, obviously, there wouldn't be a reason to change this language if it covered every felony, period.
Has there been a change in the policy or the execution of the policy, that persons with felonies can be hired?
We might note that Ms. Yuzersky is here to clarify if we need that.
Well, I don't, certainly, that's, she's available too, but I guess I could check with BSBA to see if it, it seems clear to me that this proposed language born of state statute change may, I mean, would be the guidance we would have to follow if this board were to approve the amendment in the, in the policy. I can, I can check, between now and the next meeting, I can check to see, to provide a listing of those barrier crimes and to clarify whether this excludes certain felony convictions, I think is your question. In other words, does this change the fact that right now, if we don't consider any felony conviction, will it allow some with felony convictions, depending on if, whether their conviction is for a crime not on this list of barrier crimes or related to these other crimes specified? Would they then be eligible for consideration? That's, that's what you're looking for. Okay.
So.
Other question was whether or not the procedures have changed in regards to felonies.
Well, we wouldn't change procedures until the board would have changed the policy.
So you're saying yes, Ms.?
So can I add, Mr. Collins, in the, so beyond the sections that they've added that have a lot of that about the barrier crimes, if you keep reading the policy, it does go on to say, which with what I assume is the old policy language, that the school board may employ an individual who, at the time of the individual's hiring, has been convicted of a felony, provided that such individual was employed in good standing by a school board honor before December 17, 2015, has been granted a simple pardon for such offense by the governor or other appropriate authority, and three, has had civil rights restored by the governor or other appropriate authority. So that would imply the barrier, the list of barrier crime felonies is separate from other felonies.
So that.
This policy will then allow to have felons working for the schools? Is that, is that my understanding of this, what this policy changes?
So if you look at the Virginia Code, the definition is cited in section 19, excuse me, 192 dash 392.02, and it lists the barrier crimes. And there is probably, I'm guessing, close to 50 or 60 of them that are listed. And on the very first one, it, if you go to it, it says person to violate any provision of a protective order. So I think that it's a little bit beyond just sexual offenders and stuff. So I'd be more than happy to email you this link so that you can look.
That's all right, I'll.
There's, there's a lot of them.
Discussion, and I will do my due diligence on this one. I, the only reason I bring this one up is because in the past, we said we can't hire any felons. But I want to know if this policy is going to, has an opportunity, if that's a change. So that's, that's what I'm after, whether, whether or not it's going to make a change.
No, I agree with that 100%. I think that it's important that we know that definitively, whether or not it does, because the verbiage in here kind of leaves it a little bit ambiguous as to who, you know, possibly the superintendent can, you know, make the decision that a felon can be hired.
And that appears to be a wide variety of types of, of criminal activity.
Yes, there, there are.
So he'll.
There's a lot here.
Yeah, there is a lot. Okay. We'll get some clarity. All right, get some clarity. All right, so where were we? That was, lost track.
GCDA.
GC, oh, right, okay. All right. Um, oh, did we, we went back to that one? Okay, so we talked about JED, I believe. JFCA, Teacher Removal Students From Class, questions? How about JO, Student Records? I had a question on this one, Dr. Benson, so on page, you find it on 114. Basically, it's a, a definition of directory information states that this is information contained in a student's education record that would not generally be considered harmful or an invasion of privacy if disclosed. And then it proceeds to list students' date and place of birth as one of the types of information that would not generally be considered harmful. And I was wondering, is that not considered like privacy sensitive information? Place and date of birth?
Yeah. The question is.
Is, so it, it states that place and date of birth are considered directory information?
Correct.
And it states that directory information is information that would not be considered harmful or an invasion of privacy if disclosed. And I was questioning if that was what we, we agreed, that's the understanding, that date and place of birth did not consist of like privacy sensitive information? I always thought that was.
No.
Seems to be. I, one of the, the student records, I, you know, as far as your, your freedom of.
Information Act.
No, not Information Act, but I've always wondered about this policy because I don't know if it's such a great idea to allow, I understand what it's for, it's for research and stuff like that, but it does take some of your rights to your private information away. And we know in these days and times how valuable that information is. I often wondered about that.
Well, it also involves college applications and scholarship application information and a great many uses that would be positive. Now, there may, these days, there may also be negative applications. So, I mean, it's a, it's a worthwhile piece of research, I think. There's a huge amount of information out there about directory information from Supreme Court down to the local courthouse.
So think about this on your child information, would you want that information to be able to be accessed, is my question?
As a parent, though, we have the right to refuse. Refuse that.
There's no form that, that, I don't, no form that gives you a right to refuse that.
We don't have a form for that, Dr. Benson?
Yeah, there's a.
We have something.
There's an opt-out. Parent can't opt out of having any directory information at least. But I, I'm happy to research the origin of that phrase, including, and then, you know, again, ask the Virginia School Boards if that can be excluded or remain in the policy, if that helps.
I wouldn't want my school records out in public. Saying.
Anyway, that, I don't know if I take issue with all of it, which is specifically the date and place of birth. Yes, I'm, so I was curious.
Doing it for research purposes, I still would want my, my school records out for, for that information. I would think that I would have an opportunity to, to sign off on that. That's all, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay. Any other comments on that one?
Can I just clarify to make sure that, that school information, that it's directory information, school scholastic information in terms of like achievement or testing or that type of thing is certainly not included in this, under directory information. I just want to make sure publicly that folks know that's not what's being considered at all. That's certainly protected by FERPA. This is just directly directory information as described in this paragraph. But again, I'll research that, that phrase, the date and place of birth for the board.
So when, when you hear of all this, all these different, not surveys, but findings, they have to get their records somewhere, talking about your equity. They're getting it from all these schools and so forth.
I understand what you're saying. I mean, I can tell you that, that research is typically, will access data through national databases. We do report in the aggregate, or will report actually individual to student test scores, but when they are advanced to a database that's accessible by researchers, it's not identifiable by student. It would be rather aggregated into that, that data portal, if that helps. I think that's, you're talking about research in general, when, when they infer from.
Well, so when you go into Department of Education, you can see all the, all the disciplines and all that stuff.
Correct.
I would never want a record associated with a person.
Correct, well, that, that would be illegal too. That would be. Correct. Well, that that would be illegal, too. That would be a violation of a FERPA rights. So it's never identifiable to an individual student. It's rather reported at the state level and ultimately to the national level anonymously and then in in an aggregate fashion that it can be used for research. But again, that's that's scholastic data. I want to make sure that's not what's being talked about in this policy, per se. This is directory information.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next is policy K B A requests for public records. Any comments? Policy K N A J relations with our law enforcement, law enforcement authorities?
So I just kind of found it interesting that the police officers can interrogate a minor without parental. And then it also has back here that we are to have a memorandum of understanding with the local sheriff's office. Do we have that, Dr. Benson?
Sorry. Yes, we do. I meet annually with the sheriff.
Okay. And so this says that they struck from every five years to every two years. So is that something you do every every year?
We just do every year.
Review it? Okay, I thought.
That's always been a contentious issue over time.
I'm sure.
Okay. Any other further discussion on that one? No. All right. Policy K Q, commercial promotional and corporate sponsorships and partnerships? All right. Anything we missed on any of the above policies that anyone wanted to inquire about? All right. Okay. So moving on. So our next discussion item is the V S B A bylaws workshop. So to this point in time, we have received the copies of the bylaws draft, and the board consensus was to look into doing a bylaws workshop with V S B A. However, we've not been able to gain commitment from all members of the board. So until such time as all members of the board are able to commit to a workshop, we're going to table that subject.
So why can't we have a discussion through work sessions? Why do we have to have a mediator through all of that?
Because that was the consensus of the board.
I don't think it was a consensus of the board because we didn't vote on it. Nobody, I mean, we just said, okay, if Dr. Benson wanted to check on it, but there was not a consensus of the board.
Okay. Well, nevertheless, we sought we sought participation with V S B A and can that was the step we were going to be taking. And if we cannot have entire board commitment, then I don't see the point of having a work session.
So why would we not have a work session, Adam Chair?
Because we couldn't discuss having a work session previously, and that's why we moved on to the V S B A approach.
I think Dr. Benson just recommended that we do that because you and Ms. Tolliver had additional questions. So he said, hey, how about if we do this? And we said, okay, we can try that. But I don't think the general consensus was, yeah, we can't have a work session, so let's go through the V S B A and try to have a workshop. I mean, I'd like to see how the other board members feel about having a work session.
I don't care what means that it's conducted, but it's ridiculous that we don't have bylaws or Robert's rules at this time of this this late in the day. So I don't care what avenue to get them done, work session, workshop. I don't care.
So it's not uncommon for bylaws to be drafted and then presented to the board and then the board to have a discussion. I don't know that a workshop with mediator is required. I think that, you know, we should be able to do that ourselves. There's a lot of work and thought put into these bylaws, and I think the intention was always to have a work session or two, however many it needed to be in order to review the bylaws, make any edits, additions, or, you know, with amongst the board members and move forward.
Ms. Hawk, do you have any comments?
I I was very much in favor of having the V S B A facilitate the the bylaws. I think bylaws are very appropriate. This board has functioned very successfully over the years without them. I'm not opposed to them at all. I'm certainly not opposed to instituting a specific Roberts rules as well as bylaws. I I really don't understand why a V S B representative wouldn't be the appropriate way to do this. If we can't get to that point, then I guess my concern is that perhaps there are are other issues that we need to deal with in a more expedient manner and move on at this point and then come back when we can perhaps meet with a V S B A rep.
Well, it just it just seemed like a stalling matter not to not to not to do something. So I mean, you know, so you have no rules right now. There's no rules.
We we have the Virginia School Board Association policy and
Right.
appropriate information.
So as you can see from this this year, that you can make motions when you want, you can do pretty much what you want because there's no rules in place that controls that. So it's prudent to get that underway, get that done. I mean, it's.
So considering we have, we seem to be somewhat challenged even to in discussing the matter, what if we were to compromise and have a V S B A bylaws workshop with the V S B A participating? And after that, we follow on with a work session to finish our business, much like we had a works workshop with V S B A last year to develop our norms and protocols.
Okay, so in order to have a V S B A workshop, you have to understand that we have to take off work and we have to have leave in order to do that. If we don't, you know, we also have to have the ability to be able to take off work. It's because some of us do work. I do not telework, so I don't have the flexibility of flexing my time during the day. So and I don't have the leave to do that. So that's one of the reasons why I am not willing to have a workshop. I'm not willing to take the time. And I still am a little perplexed as to why we have to have a mediator to to oversee this. I I think that a lot of boards have bylaws where they can, you know, be adults and discuss it openly. We have seven people who sat down and went through this. They spent, I don't know, we had five or six meetings. So I'm I'm just not understanding it. And I'm I'm really disappointed that that time would have been wasted if we don't move forward with at least a work session.
So as for the requirement to take off of work to participate in a workshop, I do believe that last year it was decided that we would have a work, a training session that was also held during work hours, which required that those of us that work to take leave. So I don't see that that is necessarily a pertinent argument.
So I am in a different position than I was back then.
Down to two people that have.
Exactly.
A complete difference of opinion. So would you all yield it to the other three?
No.
No?
No, it doesn't matter to me. I think it's it goes beyond. It's a little bit on a personal level. And I, you know, I'm good. We'll just continue going through, like to apologize for the committee of all, you know, for all the hard work that they did. Obviously, it's going to go wasted. And we'll just move forward. And the next year, the next board can decide on how they want to move forward. But let's not, you know, just kind of keep kicking the can around and, you know, doing whatever. It's it's time to put it to bed.
All right. Thank you. Sounds good. All right. Moving on to our information items. Do we have any committee reports? Ms. Pansiera?
No.
Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I do. I was very fortunate to meet on a Zoom meeting with the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School Committee and had some wonderful reports. They're they're moving forward with the senior activities, which are amazing. I think it it really supports the message of the importance of the hands on activities, when and how they can happen. But it also supports the amazing ability of these students and the educators to have this also happen in a virtual manner. They are moving forward with hiring additional staff and looking forward to our first meeting next September. So we invite you all to to go on their website and and look at how the students from each of the school systems have presented and appreciate the the amount of effort that has gone to it into it, especially this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Collins?
Ama'am.
All right. And I nor do I have any committee reports this evening. So moving on to our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year opening update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excited to present this to you. And I know at a previous board meeting, it was requested that prior to beginning the process for planning next year or to for communicating our plans for next year, we we kind of use the opportunity at a board meeting to not only inform the board, but our community of our intentions and the the documents we plan to use to collect the necessary planning information. So in your packet, you have a couple of things. First, you have a general letter, and this is a letter that I've drafted with the help of staff to try to convey to our community that we are, we are looking forward very much to welcoming our students back for in-person learning, full school days, five days a week. In other words, our normal pre-pandemic daily schedule for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Also in the packet is a calendar, just for the for the public's reference. And we want everyone to know that all the scheduled instructional days are going to utilize that normal, the pre-pandemic normal bell schedule for students. And we are, we are encouraged. We have several data points and initiatives that we've undertaken that I've tried to summarize in bullet fashion for you in the letter regarding not only our response protocol and our preparedness for for COVID and hosting school in a manner that is safe. We have been very fortunate. We've had no transmission student to student. Our transmission experience has really been isolated to athletics, particularly our younger students who have been in school face to face for the longest. As our our community knows, we have taken the time and the cost to install the needlepoint bipolar organization systems in all of our schools, even our preschool in those units. We also, as we discussed tonight, are looking to have similar type units that operate in similar fashion available in our school buses. We're going to continue to implement the mitigating strategies that we have put in place and that are recommended by the the CDC with fidelity specifically. We will continue to require the use of masks. We will be making in during the dual the school day adjustments in terms of things like traffic flow. You've seen like the arrows, the one-way hallways, the different types of strategies that our principals have come up with with their staff to to limit contact as best we can. And then we'll also use creatively the ancillary spaces, such as our cafeterias and our gymnasiums to teach, obviously. But then, to the extent we can, we'll certainly distance in there as well. I think a big game changer is all of our staff have had the opportunity to receive the vaccine. I'm encouraged that right now in Virginia, anyone can get the vaccine, age sixteen and up. And I'm also encouraged by the hope on the horizon that that age bracket may in fact be lowered to age twelve. So we'll keep our fingers crossed there. Finally, I want to emphasize that that we want to invite everybody back, and we certainly hope that we get the vast majority of our students. I believe we will. I believe the the fact that we're going to resume that normal pre-pandemic schedule, five days a week, will will accommodate families better, certainly, and will have a large response. That's what's hoped for with a large response. Obviously, the calculus is such where we will we will distance to the extent we can. But what must be then understood is that we may not be able to guarantee three feet of distance, but we will continue to distance to the extent possible as we welcome students back. And that includes the school buses. We will utilize the one per seat to the extent possible. If ridership necessitates, though, then we'll have to group more than one kid, one student per seat. But we would first then group students who are from the same household together as part of that protocol. So the second piece that is available to you is simply what we have drafted thus far to distribute to families. So our plan is to inform families first as soon as tomorrow with the initial letter, give them some time, and then we would we would issue then this form, which is our own planning form, so that we can account for all students and make sure that we are utilizing the months between now and August to prepare for them and their return. So that's the information I have for you this evening. I think it's exciting information. I think it's encouraging. And again, I know that we're all looking very much forward to the fall when we can get back to to a pre-pandemic status. And I think the lessons we've learned, the data we've collected, all of the adjustments we've made will underpin a safe return for our students. So I'm happy to answer any questions or expand on that if you'd like. Otherwise, you know, we're happy to take any input you may have with either the documents, the letter or the the form.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Benson, for the update. Any questions, comments?
In regards to the form, number four or three says, which learning option do you declare for next year? So it says, our circumstance necessitate a remote setting at least through the first semester of the twenty twenty-one school year. So why are you limiting it to just the first semester? What is the thought process behind that?
The the remote setting, we'll be utilizing Virtual Virginia, the resources through Virtual Virginia. To do that, we'll need to register those students who have. And again, we're looking for students. We understand while we're excited to have everybody back, we understand there may be students and families with unique situations that need accommodation otherwise. And we certainly want to be sensitive to that. We'll be utilizing Virtual Virginia. So we need to register those students soon into the Virtual Virginia program. The the tuition or the cost per student is one that covers the first semester. So we'd be really planning a commitment of those students for that first semester in terms of staffing. I anticipate hopefully we can utilize Virtual Virginia staffing, and we have a very few number of students who can be accommodated that way. I won't know until we get the information back. If we have more, then we can accommodate, kind of using Virtual Virginia as a turnkey. We may need to get dedicate kind of a blend of staffing, in which case we have to plan carefully so that we have the staffing needed in the school to host the in-person. So that's why the length of commitment is stipulated there, because that's that's the tuition charge by Virtual Virginia is per semester. It's it's not per year. You know, we'd certainly want to, if we can, get students back at the break, at the midpoint in the year, if we can do that. But if not, we would continue on the second semester and pay that tuition to Virtual Virginia accordingly. So that's where that language is born.
I I have more questions. Do you want to just go down the line and then I'll come back?
Go ahead.
So what happens? I mean, we have not had very much luck with everybody filling out the 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 survey, the questionnaire, whatever you want to call it. So what are we going to do for those students that do not respond?
Well, I don't. I mean, actually, we've had pretty good luck with people. You know, we've had sixty, seventy percent who have filled out previous surveys. And I know that I work with principals. I know they track down those that haven't responded. We don't have just say, well, we assume that they're going to do this. You know, we want school to open in a way that's not, you know, we never want to surprise at the beginning where you have too many students. And so we would reach out. It's it's April now. You know, we would have May, June, July to reach out to families that we wouldn't hear from by the middle of May or when we set this return date to then confirm that they are coming back to school in person. We'd also have a chance to reach out for those who, and I believe our intentions are to reach out to families who would mark that they have a unique circumstance, we'd have a chance to reach out to them and just talk with them about that as an accommodation. And if there's any other accommodations we need to make for that family, but we want to make sure that we are bringing back our students, that But we want to make sure that we are bringing back our students, that, you know, the, the part of the language, the legislative language, is that we will have an opportunity to, to utilize benchmark testing along the way to see if a student is struggling in a remote setting, we will have the opportunity to say, it's not working remotely. We really need to bring that student back. Now, that's barring any kind of unique medical or any 504 consideration for, for those students. But, you know, for those who would, who would select it, if it's not successful for them, then we're going to then monitor carefully those who are, are learning remotely to make sure that they're not falling further behind.
That's all right now.
Okay. Ms. Hawk?
I'm assuming that, I am assuming that as the governor's office and, and the State Department of Health make their changes and the CDC makes their changes, then we will update the scenarios and the requirements prior to school opening. Is that correct?
Well, certainly. I mean, if we, if we issued something from the governor, but it's hard to kind of answer because it's a hypothetical. We don't know, you know, all, all signs and all indications I get are the governor's office, certainly the DOE is very encouraging of opening schools to, to more students. That's the lead I'm following, and I don't, I don't see where that's going to change course.
No, I mean, in terms of, I'm, I'm very positive about school opening. I mean, in terms of wearing masks or using the Plexiglas or the physical distancing, et cetera.
Yes, I've stated plainly, and I have to state it again and again, that simply the, the distancing is something that we will do to the extent possible.
Understand.
But given that we are very encouraged to have, you know, I'm, hopefully, we have 90% or more of our students come back in person for full days, you know, without staggering the students that attend per day. It's more, it's going to be like it was before the pandemic, which obviously, if you've been in a school, you know that there are times where students will not be three feet from each other.
Sure.
But we will continue with the masks.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Ms. Hawk, with all due respect, the governor did not close down King George County schools. This board closed down King George County schools. So the governor's emergency order and everything states that the schools can be back in operation. It's what, what we choose, do not what the governor decides to do. We, there's no mandate from the governor that says we need to close schools or not reopen.
I think what you're trying to say is, is, as I am concerned as well, is, you know, Dr. Benson, a few meetings ago, I asked you, are we going to have to vote? And you said, no. We've had to vote every other time, and if we are still under a state of emergency and the governor is giving that responsibility to us, I don't see how we're not going to vote. And we've had board members that have voiced that they are concerned that they're, we're not going to be able to maintain the three-foot distance, and if we are still under a state of emergency, that we're going to still want to follow the CDC guidelines, and that's not going to be possible. So even though I am in full support of your plan, I don't feel the confidence that other board members are in support of that. And if we have to go down the road of voting on this, you know, we're going to be back to the same place that we've been for the last eight months.
So when, when the superintendent announces the schools will be open publicly in August, several of the members said they agree with that. They agree with the superintendent's recommendations. So superintendent's recommendation is to open school full-time.
Yep. I can concur with that. I'm also very encouraged by this, and I'm in full support of the reopening plan. And I don't see the, the concern over the vote. I understand the concern, though I don't, I mean, the intent, as Dr. Benson has expressed numerous times now, is to reopen the schools in essentially a pre-pandemic state, understanding that yes, there'll be mask-wearing and such. You know, we don't vote to just send kids back to school every year the way we normally do, so seems logical to me. I do have a question, Dr. Benson. The, so the Virtual Virginia, you mentioned the tuition costs. Is that, where, how, where, how is that being paid? Is that through CARES or the additional relief funds? Where is that one?
Yes, we would look to either, either CARES two or to the next round, to the rescue and recovery or the...
The, yeah, the American Relief Funds.
That would be an allowable cost, you know, and again, that's one of those costs that I'd mentioned was one that wouldn't reveal itself at the time that, that, that funding was talked about. So we would certainly lean on that, and I believe that's the purpose for that federal funding is to support those types of costs.
Right. Okay. And are the, the courses, so for, for families that choose Virtual Virginia for their students? So I know, I remember looking through myself beginning of last year, the Virtual Virginia, a lot of it was geared for like six through 12. I do see on here on the, the survey piece, there's a, you know, link for the, the elementary school offerings. Are they essentially all handled in a similar fashion? Like, so if, even for elementary school students, there would potentially be Virtual Virginia staff leading courses, teaching?
Yes, potentially. It could be Virtual Virginia staff. Again, depending on the numbers, we'd have to work with Virtual Virginia, realizing there are other, you know, 100 and some other school divisions who will also be utilizing.
Right.
I'm sure some type of online provider to include Virtual Virginia. So that, you know, that planning piece will, will play out, and we'll see if it needs to be a blend of staffing. I think what I want to make clear is that the remote option will be limited to the resources within Virtual Virginia. It won't be, you know, this year, we had, at least at the beginning, we had all of our teachers at, at minimum utilizing resources that were aligned with Virtual Virginia, but we're also expanding opportunities. You know, there, there may be curricular, curricular aspects of Virtual Virginia, you know, that, that are, are not inclusive, or we're able to provide in-person at the school, particularly with electives and specials and some, some of that information. But you are correct. In the form itself, we want to make sure families have access. If they want to view those resources, they can see those Virtual Virginia resources prior to indicating their, their need.
Can, can, sorry, can you repeat the part about the electives? They do, like, they don't offer those, or they do?
Well, it's, it's a general statement. I don't want to be unfair to Virtual Virginia. I mean, I think you'd really have to look in there to see what is offered and what isn't. I simply want to make clear that, you know, I think our teachers obviously did an outstanding job, and we offered everything we could offer virtually because it was our own product, so to speak. It was our own modality for delivery. When we're utilizing Virtual Virginia, we simply don't, you know, we can't promise that same level as was this year. You know, a short answer would be, we just won't, don't want folks assuming next year, if they chose remotely, would be the same as they experienced this year. They would really want to scrutinize and make sure that they understood what the benefits and the limitations are in terms of the Virtual Virginia offerings.
Okay. And in, and in the survey, the, the section talking about Virtual Virginia also states that enrollment in Virtual Virginia will not include any advanced academic programs as that curriculum requires in-person learning at the home school. Is that the same as what you were just talking about? Or does that mean that there are some, so?
Yeah, that's good context for exactly what I was just saying.
Okay.
In some cases, there may be some advanced programs or curriculum that wouldn't be available through Virtual Virginia. So we want folks to choose carefully. And, and again, I'll go back to, we don't, we don't want to frame this necessarily as a, as a, as just a, a choice, you know, an A-B choice. We really expect to welcome back the vast majority of our students safely. We just want to be sensitive to those families that may have unique circumstances, medically or extended family-wise, that necessitate at least temporarily a continuation of the remote option, simply predicated by their own situation at home. But we, we're really not, we're hopeful that folks don't view this as, I need to choose just A or B. And, and I guess that's in plain language. I don't know how else to say it. We want folks back. We know that in-person is best for our students, and we want our students back in person. We want to reassure them and their family that we, I have taken steps to make sure we can welcome them back in the fall safely.
So, Dr. Benson, have you talked to the teachers? Do you plan on having any type of questionnaire for the teachers?
We've had, the drafting of this has been inclusive of, of principals as well. I, I assume that they've, if they've gotten feedback or will get feedback, it'll be at that level through the teachers, through the principals, and they'll relay it to me. But I've not had a separate meeting with teachers, no.
So you're not going to ask them if they want to come back or remain virtual? That's what I'm asking. So you're asking the, the parents. So, I mean, this, this whole school year was all about priority for the teachers, and I...
We're just planning to welcome...
I'm sorry, I'm just having a really hard time that...
...our normal pre-pandemic.
I, I'm having a really hard time believing that this plan is actually going to come to, to fruition because it, it doesn't, in my mind, from what I've heard and seen in the past and read in the emails, and what the governor is saying and what other areas are doing, I, I just find, I mean, I think it's wonderful. Don't get me wrong, I'm at 110%, but I am very, very apprehensive that this is actually going to happen.
Any further discussion? Ms. Hawk? You looked, you, oh, I thought you were, okay. Mr. Collins?
I think it's going to happen. You know, question is, how many students are returning? The teachers, they're going to need to return because they, you know, the superintendent is their boss, and they, he said they're, need to come, come there. So now the question is, how many students will have the option for the Virtual Virginia? So I, I think it's going to, what, what make it not, not go?
I, I think that, you know, if the governor not lifting the restrictions, we're not able to maintain the social distancing. I mean, you know, all of these things have been issues with this board from day one. All of these things have been issues with this, with the teachers from day one. And then all of a sudden, you know, a vaccine which just poof, makes everything go away? I, I'm, I'm just not, you know, I'm apprehensive.
I think that everything, everybody knows everything didn't go away, but...
Well, all of a sudden, it made it okay.
The, I think the country's moving forward, and the whole country's moving back to school. I mean, I don't, I don't see what could stop it at this point. I mean, have all, everything you, you need, including the bus filters now, well, not yet, hadn't been, hadn't been okay yet, sorry. But, so there's nothing else that could mess it up, really? Good?
A vote. A vote. Mr. Collins, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I personally am not concerned about a vote. I have great confidence in the plan that has been, that we have seen this evening. I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm interested in seeing how many students choose, how many families decide that they do still want to remain with the remote option. But my personal view of the past year, and I understand the, the hesitancy, I guess, in the, the belief of this based on how this year has gone, but this year has been very, there has been a lot of progress made. Yes, there's a vaccine that has, that has been contributing to lower transmission levels and in general, fewer cases, but we have also, our teachers were a big concern, that is true, but as we have progressed, you know, teachers have been offered the chance to be vaccinated. We do have the ionization system, all of these things. And while I know there was frustration with the lack, the, the, the state of the hybrid model that we have at this point in time, but we heard from our administrators that that's what made sense at this time versus making additional changes. And now is the time to make the additional change for the fall. And I also don't see what would, I don't foresee on the, barring some cataclysmic change to something crazy in the world, I have great confidence this will be the path that we continue down.
Think that is a vote for yes.
We've seen that retracted time and time again this past year, but that's okay. Let's move on. Let's see what happens. I'm just voicing my concern, and, you know, Ms. Gonzalez sent us an email, and it says right here, "Having no plan for physical distancing the kids to at least a minimum of the CDC recommendation is a deviation from existing best practices for King George and introducing a high risk for the reopening plan." I mean, I don't know.
I'm not sure which email that was.
That was the email that you forwarded to us from Ms....
All right.
Okay. So yes, we will certainly... Ms. Hawk?
May I make, make a statement clarifying my position? Because I too am very, very optimistic and plan to vote positively, as Ms. Gonzalez says, barring some great issue that we as a board can, and Dr. Benson as our leader, can't find a mitigation for. And I, I think we have come through a very difficult year. Our educators have done an amazing job, not, not all by any means, but most. And our students, we saw the students come in tonight, thanks to Ms. Dogridge to a great extent, with such positivity and, and such initiative, that the leadership group at the middle school is proof that, that there's the energy out there to make even our strange hybrid middle school program work. And I too don't, you know, I maybe don't have the positivity that Mr. Collins does, but he's always been more positive than I have. But most of the time anyway. But, but I truly think that, that parents and families can plan on this. There's not some underlying issue that we're not talking about. We're, we're trying to respond to emails from parents. We're trying to respond to emails from educators. We're issuing contracts. Is that right, Ms. Yuzersky? We're issuing contracts? And we are moving on. We're, we're trying to hire, desperately interested in hiring, as all the school systems are. So I, I just want to be clear that, that I don't, even though I respect what's coming out of the governor's office and the Department of Education, because that's what we should be doing, and we respect CDC, and we follow the science, that's where the information is going to come from.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Any final comments? No? All right. So moving on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Benson, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to continue the optimism, and I want to congratulate and recognize, we had an exciting weekend. We had both our cross-country team at the high school, and we had our football team compete at the state level, and they competed admirably. I think it's been quite some time since we've had our, the football team, I think, in the, at that level of competition. So my congratulations to, to the coaches, to the players, certainly to the community for their support of both our cross-country student athletes and our football team this year. Congratulations to all. I also want to point out that, and Ms. Hawk, you've segwayed beautifully to my next announcement as far as hiring and, and, you know, seeking new employees or replacement employees for those that, where we have vacancies. But I want to thank Ms. Yuzersky and her staff. They continue to be very creative. I'm going to actually put the board members to work. I have an envelope for each of you tonight. But we have, we have little cards for folks, and we have materials that allow people to scan a QR code, and then on their phone, they have a list of all the vacancies. I did it this afternoon, and it was, it was, well, it impressed me. In fact, I think I've applied for two. No, I'm kidding. I didn't. But anyway, I will, I will give these to you as school board members, because I know on occasion, you sometimes run into folks who may, who may make potential excellent employees for our school division, and certainly we'll be flooding these around, given the limitations we have to, to virtual recruiting and some of the, the events we usually rely on. We're just looking at other ways that we can recruit future employees. So thank you, Ms. Yuzersky, and thanks to the board for a chance to highlight this. I'll get each of you your envelope with your cards, you can kind of stick in your purse for a while, and if happenstance comes up, pass this along so folks can check out our, our vacancies.
So 10 of, if each of us get 10, that's 50 more employees. That should be, that should be easy enough, shouldn't it?
It sounds perfectly fine to me.
Challenge.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
We also like that it is not limited to educators. We're looking for drivers and custodians and speech language pathologists and all kinds of folks.
All right. 10, okay. We'll provide our numbers next week, right? Okay. You have points or something, or recruiting? All right. So, moving on here towards end of our meeting, board comment, Ms. Pansier.
Okay, so first I'd just like to say that the, the artwork was beautiful. There was a lot of depth in both submissions that many of you, many of you may not have been able to identify, so I encourage you to look. I'm assuming they'll be posted on our website, Dr. Benson? The pictures, the artwork?
Yes, me.
The artwork will be, yeah, take picture and put it on the, um. Also, it was great seeing the middle school future leaders. Their video was wonderful and touched a lot of sensitive topics. I think we all could learn from each and every one of them. The PTA reflection winners, there's a great job on the achievements and sweeping the state level, way to go. Always a big defeat. So the outstanding educator spotlight, it was awesome to hear the, all the positive comments we have about our teachers. I've always said that they're heroes, we have great teachers in the community and it's nice to actually hear that the parents are pleased with their performance as well. As far as Mr. Hall, I just wanted to share a news article that was in the Washington Post pertaining to the Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction. He stated on Monday that the state is not eliminating advanced high school mathematic courses, and I'm going to quote from the Washington Post. So Superintendent James Lane said that the Virginia Department of Education is in the early stages of a regularly scheduled revision of its mathematics standards of learning, which guides school systems and their course offerings across all areas of instruction. As part of that revision process, which takes place every seven years, state officials recently began workshopping some ideas as to how Virginia could teach mathematics in a way that better prepare children for college and the workforce, Lane said. The ideas detailed online as part of the program called the Virginia Mathematics Pathways Initiative included rejiggering eighth, ninth, and 10th grade math courses to place a greater emphasis on fields, including data science and data analytics, Lane said. Schools would still offer traditional courses such as Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, the superintendent said, but these courses would now incorporate stronger foundations and data analytics, for example. I also witnessed him speaking on one of the news channels, so I just want to give a couple of people a little bit of comfort knowing that it's not quite as it's been portrayed. I also would like to address Mr. Haga's comment that, about the masks, because it's not the first complaint that I have had in regards to masks being required when the children are on the playground. I visited schools back in November when we were planning on opening in person and I witnessed that the kids that were in the Y program were on the playground without masks. I also witnessed some children in the gym as well without masks and I think that we should look at the science of wearing the masks and the transmission of the virus among our children and consider allowing our children to not wear their masks on the playground. I am sure that there are other risks and mitigation measures that we could take and I work full-time in an office and am required to wear a mask all day and I will say it is very difficult. I cannot imagine how the kids are coping and I would like to see if Dr. Benson and his staff would look further into the requirements of mask usage on the playground and have this as a discussion item on a future agenda. I would also like to touch on our budget. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, a school board member spoke during public comment. I think that this is important and I strongly encourage everyone to speak during public comment when any of our board, boards offer the opportunity. I support all school board members in doing so, however, it is important to make the public aware that the statement is not the opinion of the board as there were several parts that I did not agree with. I strongly encourage any future board member who wishes to make public comment to state they are speaking as a public citizen and specifically not as a representative of the school board, just a formality that we may want to look at putting in a statement in our bylaws, which I guess will happen possibly next year. So I know that when I have talked to large groups, I make it known that I'm speaking as an individual and that any information or opinion that is presented by me is not representative of the school board and have said so repeatedly in conversations when opinions or sensitive matters is being discussed. As a public servant, it is very hard to separate yourselves from the perception of our position and we should always be cognizant of our actions. To address the Board of Supervisors reducing their contribution at the last meeting, I would like to offer this. Once the budget is set at the public hearing, the funding cannot, funding amount cannot be increased, however, it can be decreased. So asking for additional funding is not something the Board of, of Supervisors can even do at this point. I believe the Board of Supervisors have been very supportive of the school this past year and since I have been on the board, this last year, they have given us additional CARES funding, 90% of our requested funding, which was, supports a 5% pay increase for teachers and staff, and providing 22 million for the addition and renovation to the middle school, which will welcome new students this year. So I'd like to say thank you to all of the members of the Board of Supervisors for the continued support of our schools and strongly encourage all school board members to maintain an open and cordial communication among us. In the past four budgets that I have been involved in, this year ranks number two as the most the Board of Supervisor has funded us, with approving 90%, 95% of the requested amount, the highest being FY19, which was 100%. And I was told that that was an anomaly. In subsequent years, for FY20 and 21, they contributed more than 17.8 and 17.5 million, which equates then to 93 and 91% of our requested funding. Working through the budget is always a challenge, challenging task for both our staff and Dr. Benson. As they're working through the process, they have always made each year budget work. The fact that the Board of Supervisors gave us 95% of what we requested and is almost $200,000 higher than last year, I feel that we were not only treated fairly, but generously. With the additional funding we can use from the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, I strongly believe that we will be successful in covering our expenses. So the bottom line is, I am optimistic that the budget made available will give us what we need to have a successful '21, '22 year. And of course, in hopes that that will in fact be in-person learning. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Pansier. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Dr. Benson. If you could bring us back an update on summer programs at our next meeting, I've had some parents asking for them and I've been referring them to the, to the various contacts at the school board office, but perhaps you could update us on the summer programs? And the second thing was, do we have any more information on perhaps an out, a retirement activity, or an activity to honor our retirees? We discussed that briefly last time and then I'd, I'd like to hear what we have as an idea to proceed with that. I also would like to respond to Mr. Hall tonight. I appreciate his coming out and I do want to encourage him to, to seek more sources of information for that because as, as Ms. Pansier did clarify, there were a number of different articles, as well as a very lengthy explanation of the Virginia Math Initiative on the Department of Education website, the VDOE website. There was great, careful explanation and I referred a number of people who shared that, their concern about the disaster that was reported on some news sources. It, it is not apparently the disaster that it was perhaps described. I do think that the Virginia Department of Education website does a really good job of explanation in great detail. So I encourage our families and our public to look, look up the details of the information on that site. I want to thank Ms. Rinco for the information about the outstanding educators and they cover the gamut from preschool through high school. And it is interesting that, that it isn't, that some of the, some of the references are coming from the students themselves in addition to parents and public. I think it's always a good recommendation when a student says, "You're a really cool teacher." That's probably the highest recommendation that anybody could ever seek. And one of the things that really stood out to me from the readings from Ms. Rinco was the term compassion and encouragement. And I believe that was a quote from perhaps a parent who described that educator. And I can't emphasize that enough, especially this year in, in these trying times, compassion and encouragement can make such a difference in, in all of the students, both the students who are achieving virtually and those who are achieving in person, those who are struggling, barely holding on, and we've heard from so many of those parents during this school year. It can only take one comment from a teacher to destroy a child's image or to enhance it and encourage it. And I, I really encourage all of our educators to remember those terms, compassion and encouragement. And I, I think we as board members need to continue to remember them also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. Ms. Rinco, thank you for presenting the educators and all the kind words, appreciate that. The artwork was fabulous. Ms. Dogridge, your group is always great, yous do a great job and I always look forward to that group and their, their work. As, as regards to Mr. Hall, I too was very concerned about that when I first heard about it and, and I did do some research on the matter and Ms. Pansier has that correct. And I also went through all the question and answers on the Department of Education's site. So I think we will be okay there. Mr. Haga, I, I did answer your email today and I know it wasn't sent to me to answer, but I answered it anyhow. I, I am concerned about children wearing masks in 85-degree weather on the playground. I think that if there's six-foot distancing on the playground, they can not wear a mask. So that would be my recommendation to you, Dr. Benson. As in regards to the budget, I, Ms. Pansier couldn't have said it any better, really. I concur with all her statements in regards to the budget. I, I do caution folks, there is the CARES, American Rescue, and we'll be able to supplement some of these items. But I also must caution that, so whether you like it or not, you can't bite the hand that feeds you because we don't have any funding sources. We don't, we, we can't, you know, we get money from the state, federal government, and the local, local money. So I think we need to renew some of the relationships that, in the past, because it's all for the same purpose, is for the, for our citizens, our students. So I would encourage all of us to reach out to Board of Supervisors members and rekindle some of the faith that was there in the past. I, I do have that still same concern, I know we keep kicking the can down the road and we, we call it all kinds of things, but we, I mean, to show some solidarity, some working together, which we've had problems with, I think we need to establish these rules where we can do that. I don't know what the answer to that question is, I just know that it needs to be done. So I think that we need to, sometimes, you know, we can go down these rabbit holes and we can get, we can get angry about specific items. I think that we need to come back out of those and, and just, just try something different. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
And so for my comment, I want to congratulate all of the artists and on their amazing artwork here before us. I'm sorry, I've not been able to catch this particular frame each time it falls onto the table, but also enjoyed the, the middle school leadership group. It is encouraging to see a room full of students again. We haven't had a whole bunch of that this year, so that was, that was great. And I look forward to going and checking out the other Harvard videos on the, on the website. So thank you, Ms. Dogridge, still with us this evening for, for bringing them to us. So that was, that was excellent. And I also wanted to actually thank Ms. Pansier for sharing Dr. Lane's comments from the Washington Post article on the Virginia Mathematics Pathway Initiative and the issue brought forth this evening. I also read that article and do hope that that alleviates some concern about the, the proposed changes to math curriculum. I would like to address the earlier comment regarding the school board members making public comment at the '21, '22 public budget hearing or the Board of Supervisors last week. As the only school board member in attendance at the hearing, I did in fact state clearly in my public comment that I was speaking as a parent and a citizen. The implication that I did otherwise is entirely inappropriate and unappreciated. Lastly, I know the community's been very concerned about our plans for next fall and rightfully so, and so I would like to thank Dr. Benson for providing such an encouraging update this evening. I'm very excited about the fact that my youngest will be heading to kindergarten in a classroom and not on a Chromebook, though that's certainly not an indictment of this year's virtual instruction because if her older brother's first grade experience was any indication, it would be entirely positive. But so, very encouraged to leave it at that and I look forward to seeing what the fall brings.
All right. And with that, we will move on to closed session.
Could I have one more comment?
Mr. Collins?
So you, you were in person at the Board of Supervisors meeting, but I'm at every Board of Supervisors meeting virtually, so I, I'm in attendance.
Okay. I'm sorry. Certainly. Okay. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion pursuant to State Code Section 2.23711.8.1 for the purpose of discussion consideration prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitutes, regulations, retirements of the employees of the school board.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Your vote's aye. We're now in closed session.
Your vote's aye. We're now in closed session.